To the adoption of the agenda at this time, do what's the care of the board?
Motion.
All right, Ms. Mathis makes that motion. Ms. Agner, Ms. Carlton seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried.
Aye.
Okay. And then accord to the approval of next, next on the agenda is approval of our minutes for the September, the, uh, third regular school board member, public hearing and executive session.
Motion.
Uh, Ms. Carlton makes that motion. Ms. Agner seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. All right. Items of interest by the board, uh, as far as the public is concerned, if we have anyone today or tonight that would like to address the board, this would be your opportunity to do so. And so I think we got several in the, uh, audience, so come on forward.
How y'all doing?
Good, how are you?
My name's Mark Sutherland, Jimmy Salz is with me. We're part of the, uh, Taylor County Bulldog Booster Club. Something we've wanted to talk about or have talked about for a few years now is two of the coaches in the past. One of them being Elmer Coker and the other one, C.T. Burgess. They were the two, I think Coach Coker had a tenure a couple of years longer than Coach Burgess, but they're the longest tenured coaches we've ever had. Also, the, uh, well, I'll get to the other part. I got asking two things. We don't want to rename anything. We just want to name something. And we got a suggestion for that out in the football field if we could consider it. The first one is Coach Elmer Coker. I gave y'all each a packet. We'd like to be addressed as Co-, uh, Elmer Coker Field at Dorset Stadium. That way we keep the Dorset name and everything and it, you know, it deserves to be there. I've got a few things here to read if you don't mind, if you got a second. David Wilson, a player, his be Crawfordville. And then I guess it was around 2018, he pushed real hard and I didn't make y'all copy of it. It was about 900 pages, 450 back, back to back brochure that he handed into the Hall of Fame. And Coach Coker was inducted in 2019. And only coach we've ever had from Taylor County that was, has been inducted to the Hall of Fame. And this is his writings and I agree with every one of them. So he says, uh, once upon a time, this was the first day in his brochure, there was, uh, there was a day when a giant walked the sidelines of high school football fields across the state of Florida. Legendary among his peers, respected and feared by those who coached against him, loved and admired by the boys he played for. Magnificent role model for the students and the schools where he worked. He was respected by people in his community. He was a God fearing, humble, hardworking family man with a knack for getting the best from his teams. Once upon a time is often the beginning of a fairy tale, but this is no fairy tale. The giant was Elmer Coker. He coached at Crawfordville, Jefferson County, Taylor County High School. Now, just a little bit of things about Coach Coker. Went to school here, started in, uh, Cabbage Grove. And I think he came to the junior high school as an eighth grader. He played football varsity in 1952, 53, 54, 55. He was on the basketball team in 55, 56. They helped win the small state, state championship for small basketball schools or towns. He went to college, North Florida Junior College. He was the first, uh, student president in North Florida Junior College. He finished his degree at FSU and he went into coaching. He came back home, 63, 64. He was assistant to C.T. Burgess. 63, started the first track team in Taylor County's history. 65, 66, he took a head coaching job at Crawfordville High. He actually, they called it a, uh, he won the mythical state championship there. I don't know if their level at that time could go to districts or what, but that's what they said. And then, uh, 67 to 62, he coached at Jefferson County and won a state championship there in 1972. Then he came home in 1974 to 84. He coached at TCHS. He had a team in 1977. I was fortunate enough to play on both of these 77 team. He was state runner up. 78, we made the playoffs, we respected the win and so we did. And, uh, but to me, these next two things were pretty cool because when he was at Crawfordville, he coached the first two black All-Americans that ever went to school there. And then in Perry, he, uh, when he was here and other places, he got four times he was picked by the, uh, hang on, referees in North Florida for the best sportmanship. And that's a pretty good honor. And he had a Coach of the Year statewide, I think it was three times. He also coached the first black American from Perry, Allen Del Campbell. And then he was inducted 2019, Florida Hall of Fame. I've put together a little brochure. Uh, his right hand person was Pat Coker, beautiful lady, and she thought we were kids, every one of us. And she was something. But she can go through here and just see different things that he did with the track team. And in the back, she's got some stuff that David Wilson put in the application for the Hall of Fame. It's pretty interesting. One other thing David put, he said, Elmer Coker was a great coach. He was also a great man. He won't say it, but I, but I and many of his boys will. That's how he refers to us. Jimmy sees him, Reggie, I see him. Here comes my boys. It's all the time. We love the guy. I'd like to ask first if we could name the field, Elmer Coker Field. Then I got C.T. Burgess. Now, I don't know as much about C.T. as I did Coach Coker, he was for my town. But I put a few things with some pictures of C.T. and then the stories. Before he retired from coaching, he kept teaching, both of them kept teaching. Uh, one of the principals at the time is Mr. Barton. He and C.T. didn't see eye to eye. And I, I remember right, it was 200 students and parents came up here to the school board and spoke for Coach Burgess. Mr. Barton wanted to let him go. They decided they'd sign him to another contract. They wanted to go half year. He said, I won't do that. And it's in the back. But C.T. was, he was a very strict coach and a great leader. So was Coach Coker. He was here from 61 to 69. And if I'm right, he moved from Alabama to Perry. He, uh, coached our first All-American, which was Chuck Flores. 68, 69, both of those teams went undefeated. And that was the first two teams in Perry to go undefeated. Let's see, 2010, Faircloth put a thing together, let's honor the coach, uh, for a decade or a silver, how do you put it? It says, we called it a silver 60s because he was here all the 60s and I would estimate 200 people, players came to that. And, uh, that was one of his big, he was a friend of mine too, but it was one of his big deals. I mean, he enjoyed that. I was going to put all the players on the piece of paper, but I didn't have time because it would have taken eight or nine sheets that he coached that are notable people in the community. I mean, really known and very well successful. Bonnyston is married to one. He is just, he was our standard when we were playing. And then Coach Coker's standard to players after us. And I can remember one thing they did together. We were about to play Leon. They were ranked number one in the state. They just dropped from 4A to 3A. We practiced, was it Sunday? We started on Sunday. Uh, we got out there and practiced. We practiced two, three hours, whatever Coach wanted. And he had a surprise for us, he said. And here comes C.T. Burgess. And a lot of us was like, whoa, you know, I mean, here's, here's a legend. He spoke to us for another hour. He picked a position a day, backfield, line. So every day until Thursday, he was there at the end of practice for an hour or so. Between him and Coach Coker, we were so fired up, we would have killed anybody. We had estimated between seven, eight thousand people at the game. And it was just, it was mystical. I mean, you know, we'd get out there and we'd beat them 2013. Then we had to go to Tallahassee the next year and we beat them again. And we can say we're the only team in Perry that beat Leon every time we played them. But we'd like for the press box to be named after Coach Burgess. We feel like, you know, they need the recognition. We've had good coaches since. Nobody with a long tenure. We've had a state championship coach. He was here two years. You know, these both, well, Burgess wasn't from here, but he stayed here. Elmer grew up here and he's still here. I'd like to ask y'all tonight to give us an answer if we could get it. If we can, we want to have a ceremony. We want to get some banners. And then we'll do it upright next year with signage. But we want to honor these guys if we can.
All right, thank you.
Thank y'all for everything you're doing too. Appreciate you very much.
Can we comment on that?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, I, I personally think that it's, it's, it's a good idea. We don't honor people enough. I mean, we, we try to honor students, but we need to honor, uh, people that are, are touching the lives of students. And not only that, it's, 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 it's good for our community too. So I, you know, I am supportive of that.
Is this on our agenda tonight?
It's not. We can't take action on it tonight, but they've just come to make the plea, so we appreciate that. And thank you, Mark, for all this. Like this was, I know this took a lot of time and I didn't even know a lot of this.
I could tell you this, I don't know if there's articles still around or not, but when they interviewed Sammy one time about Vietnam, like on several.
I have a question.
He has. He actually told the story about C.T. Burgess basically saving his life in the jungle of Vietnam. The discipline that he taught.
All right, Ms. Dunell, go ahead. I just, um, I do think we have a policy in regards to this type of stuff, so I'm just wondering, are the presenters aware of our policy and just making sure we align with the policy? I know tonight it just came before the board, but it would be good, I think, to reference the policy. So they will be aware of what the process is.
Okay.
Okay.
We can't take action tonight anyway, but.
I know we can't take action tonight, but that's what I'm saying, being that they have presented this to the board. I just think we need to make sure that we're noticing that, I mean, we make them aware that there is a policy in regards to this.
Okay, yes ma'am.
Thank you. Because that'd be information for them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank y'all. Um, that will have to come as an adjourned item before the board. Okay? All right. All righty. Uh, I think we had someone else. Yes, ma'am, come on.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, appreciate it.
Um, hi, I'm Kathy Kreidler. Um, work at the elementary school and a member of the union. There were two things that, um, I have something personally to say and then I was requested to read a letter from a parent who wasn't able to make it back from her job in Tallahassee in time for the meeting. Okay? So I'll start with the letter from the parent. And like I say, this is verbatim. She sent it to me. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Casey Hackel and I have boys at the elementary and primary school.
I don't think Mr. Monday gave the admonition about not naming anybody by name.
Oh, it won't.
Okay.
She just named herself.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I want, she wanted to say who she was for the, yes, but I thank you for that. I'm writing this as a concerned and frankly frustrated parent. I have serious concerns about the wanting to change the current policy in regards to allowing students with level three referrals to go on field trips. It deeply worries me that students who have committed serious offenses such as sexual misconduct, verbal altercations, bullying, harassment, fighting, threatening other students in hazing are still being allowed to attend these trips. This is unacceptable. The letter continues. Field trips are meant to be enjoyable educational experiences for students. But how can we, as parents, feel safe sending our children on these trips when we know that students who have engaged in such dangerous and harmful behaviors are alongside them? I cannot understand how a student who has threatened or harmed others or engaged in sexual misconduct is being rewarded with the privilege of a field trip. That makes no sense. These are not minor infractions. They are serious, sometimes criminal behaviors. And yet by allowing them to go on these trips, we are essentially telling them that their actions don't have meaningful consequences. What message does that send to the students who follow the rules and treat others with respect? What message does that send to the victims of bullying, harassment or worse? As a parent, I expect our schools to prioritize the safety and well-being of all students. Allowing those who have received level three referrals to participate in field trips undermines that entirely. We should be setting a higher standard of accountability. These trips are a privilege and students who engage in this kind of behavior should not be granted that privilege. I urge the board to take immediate action, implement a policy that makes it clear if you engage in behavior seriousness, serious enough to result in a level three referral, you will not be going on field trips. It's about protecting our children and upholding the values of respect, responsibility and safety that our school should stand for. Thank you. So that was the letter from the parent.
Heather, tell me who this parent was again, I'm sorry.
Her name is Casey, C.A.C.E.Y. Hackel, H.A.C.K.E.L.
E.L., thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And you said she has a student at the elementary school?
She has a student at the elementary school and primary school, as she stated in the.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay, now, I know that like cut into my three minutes and I promise I won't use my three minutes, my whole three minutes. But I, I would just like to say something, okay? As a, as a citizen of Taylor County and, uh, as a teacher, but especially as a citizen, I am also offended, concerned, shocked at the possibility of a level three offense being allowed to attend a major field trip. If I turned around right now and cold cacked somebody in this audience, I wouldn't be spending the night in jail. I wouldn't be boarding a charter bus to go with my peers four hours away. And Angela wouldn't be responsible for making sure I didn't do it again at the Jacksonville Zoo. Okay? Or at NASA while I was spending the night on the floor under the spaceship. I feel like this is a very slippery slope. In the way the world is going, we are all offended by it. We are all upset by it. We are all unnerved by it. What are we telling our future citizens about consequences? And we are sending a very, very dangerous message. And I, I feel very strongly about this. Um, now I voiced that and now I'm just going to say this and then I promise I'll sit down. And I'm not sure if you guys are even aware because I just became aware of this today. And I know you can't answer me and I get that. I don't expect an answer. And investigations are going on like now, I'm sure. People are trying to find out. But in a year where we lost a major employer and children that we poured our hearts into for half a year were uprooted and moved. And a year where a high category three hurricane came through and leveled us, thank God we're alive. And a year when there was a bomb threat. And a year when truancy was outrageous. Teachers focusing on reducing behaviors. How can we follow that up with rewarding inappropriate behaviors? To me, it feels like lowering the bar. And yet today, I saw that teacher evaluations percentages have changed. And now data for children that, some children, we can't even get to come to school or behave while we're there, but they go on a field trip to NASA. Their test scores count for 50% of whether we are eligible for future raises. That amount has been changed. Don't know when it happened, where it happened. Don't know if it was a state mandate. All that's being looked into. But I just am like, wow, you know? I went to almost every political forum and everybody said the right things. Everybody said, we need to step up and address behavior. We need to step up and address teachers leaving. But I don't know any legislator and I don't know any person in any business that would be okay with having half of their evaluation based on something they had only a quarter of a control over. So I didn't even know if you guys were aware of it because I wasn't until today. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Do we have any more out? Ye- yes, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, come.
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Danica Lloyd. I teach at Taylor County Elementary School. I'm glad Kathy Kreidler got up before me because this was not planned at all. This is, um, emotions have just got a hold of me. So I'm glad she said a lot of that and it sounded really good because that's what I want to piggyback on. I'm here to talk about, um, the matrix as being adopted. Uh, when she brought up NASA, I'm that teacher that plans the NASA trip. It's a labor of love. It's not an easy trip to plan. We go overnight. We travel four hours. It's a great trip. I love it. I went for the first time with my fourth grader, first time I ever went on an overnight trip. When I came, when I moved here to Perry, I, I've worked in other districts. And I thought, wow, this is a fabulous trip. This is wonderful. The kids love it. They get so much out of it. More importantly, they get out of Taylor County. And that's, that's what I want for them. I want them to set their sights above Taylor County. Not that that's a bad, you know, anyway. A level three referral means they can have a sexual misconduct. Something. And I'm taking students four hours away that spend the night in a government facility. So that is deeply troubling to me if I can't trust a student if they're going to have sexual misconduct here at our school and I'm taking them on an overnight trip. That should bother everybody in this room because we sleep out in a, a very large room. But we're trusting these children and their families that are coming with them. Another level three referral is gross disrespect for a teacher. Okay? Uh, for the first time ever, a couple of weeks ago, I got pushed. I got slapped by a student on the recess field. It's never happened to me before. I've been teaching for 25 years and I don't typically have trouble with students like that, but I, I was trying to break up a fight, but we can't take students to overnight field trips if they can't even abide by these major rules in our school system. So that, that's, as a parent, I would be deeply concerned about that. So I wanted to talk about that. And then also glad for Ms. Kreidler being very calm and collected. And normally I would have a prepared speech. I would, I've never done this before in my life to get up without a prepared speech. But this morning, I got called in for my evaluation. I've been teaching for 25 years. I have always been a highly effective teacher in a tested grade level. Nobody wants to be in a tested grade level. The stress of it is so high. Except for the year of COVID when everybody got ineffective. I've always been a highly effective from another county and in this county. And I sat down this morning with my principal and got shown this form. It's new. And it says 50% of my student growth, that's 50% of my evaluation. I said, wait a minute, for this past year? I didn't know that. I wasn't ever told that. It doesn't match the other one that's online that we've had before. I have the other one I'm used to. So I, I, like she said, I don't know when this happened. Wait a minute, last year? You're judging me? I have a new sheet that's judging me on last year's students when we had all the things, the bomb threat, the hurricane. The kids are just out of whack. They're just, they don't know if, where they're going to live. I'm in teaching because it's a mission. It's a mission for me. I'm there because I love them. And I pour my heart out into it. And you're telling me that a half of my evaluation is how they do on their state scores when this county doesn't even make parents bring them to school? I had a student that didn't even show up a whole quarter of their last year and they went on to the next grade. But attendance matters. I can be the best teacher in the world and if they're not there, they're not hearing it. And now I'm being told how they do on that test is half a year evaluation. By the way, first time today, I was told that. So I didn't know that when I started teaching last year. I would have assumed that any employee anywhere would be told how they're going to be evaluated before. So it, it just kicked me in the gut. It kicked me in the gut. I have never gotten up and spoken at a forum like this in my life because I'm too busy. I'm too busy in my classroom. I'm too busy grading papers. I'm too busy calling parents. I'm too busy trying to go to NASA and calling three different bus companies to get the lowest price I could get for my families. I'm always in my classroom and I'm always about to be divorced because I'm in it for my kids. But this is wrong. You can't do that to teachers. And for the first time ever, I'm feeling like maybe I need to leave teaching and that's not where I want to be. Because I'm a good teacher. Because I love my kids. But this is wrong.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Do we have anyone else? Okay. What, uh, what has been brought to our attention, I'm sure, under the advisement of our superintendent and whatever.
That decision was made, not this past summer, but the summer before. And I don't know if Ms. Phil wants to speak on it, but every principal, I mean, that, they had extensive training with Marzano. Every principal was to go and assistant principals were in those trainings as well. And they were to go back and discuss, correct me if I'm wrong, that should have been done at each site. And that was not this year. That was last year. So, Ms. Lloyd, I, I am so sorry that, I'm trying to look at you, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry, like, that was, that should not have happened. That is not okay. And can I ask you one more question, please? You said you were judged 50% of your evaluation was based on how they scored, not, so you're not, so not growth? Well, they wouldn't have had growth that year.
Growth of issue.
So growth and proficiency.
I, I've, I've never had a problem doing that. I mean, I, I'm all in it. Last year was a wreck.
It was a wreck. Yes, ma'am.
It's the longevity of it too. It puts so much pressure on teachers. We're in it for the kids. We're in it for reasons. Test, test scores aren't everything. I have to be there to, to help them when they're going through their. Bring them clothes. I have to be there.
Absolutely.
Is everything okay?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. So I'll, Ms. Lloyd, I will look into this, but just know that you're, all of your, all the administrators were trying, as Ms. Phil said, that was, um, I apologize. I did not know that y'all were not aware of that. So. Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. Go right ahead. Good.
But so you're saying that it was, that our data was 50% of last year's evaluation as well? That this is not a new thing?
That's correct. So the reason that Ms. Lloyd is talking about her evaluations this year is because you can't get the second part of your evaluation until your scores come in. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Lloyd. So that's why, Ms. Kreidler, does that make sense?
No, yeah. I just didn't realize that last year was 50% possibly.
It was and all of that, I mean, every administrator.
Such a traumatic year that our data, that, that our test scores were not as affected by things so out of our control.
Well, this was put into place before all those things that were not in your control took place.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, ma'am. Could, could have been. I don't, I don't know, but I do know that every administrator had that training. I do know that the director personnel asked that they all go back and give that, provide that information.
So the website just hasn't been updated? Because the website one says 33%.
I can't speak for the website, but Ms. Phil, it was board approved. We're talking about this one though.
Okay, so this one is, is new. No, no. Only that portion of it was.
Yes, you did.
Now, we had to go to the O.E. this whole past year. Ours was just approved through D.O.E. I'd have to. And, um, all kinds of criteria. So it's sent to us last week and administrative evaluation is finalized, I'm hoping this week. Both of those will be brought to the board. And this usually takes a long time. It was not in this position, but I think everybody's.
So I think the question that they're asking is, was this approved, the one that they were evaluated on? I think that's what they're asking.
Yeah, it was 50%. So that is just one, not the evaluation. I mean, that is just a portion of the. That update was not approved.
Does it have to be? I think it's the. Does it have to be? I think is the question. You're, you're saying that part doesn't have to be approved? That's a district, that's a district decision, correct? The union doesn't negotiate that? Is that now what you've been told? Okay. But nevertheless, you're, you should have been told that. That's not okay.
My rating is now and that'll affect me in my and I wasn't told at the beginning of the year how I would be evaluated. And this is based on last year. And within the first two weeks, it is stated in the policy that that should be.
Can I ask a question? Is this a possibility with the deregulation that's going on in the public schools? That this is something that we could address to our legislators or whoever.
This is a local decision, Bonnie. Our teacher evaluation system, this is what we, like, we decide. The legislators don't.
This is not dictated.
This was discussed and we had training from Marzano, which is our evaluation system. And the ratings, which is what's locally controlled, every principal and assistant principal sat in that training and we all discussed what would be, what would be best. And that was a collective decision. As Ms. Pugh stated, within the first two weeks, that's always been how it's done. They're supposed to go over that evaluation criteria with their teacher.
I'm gonna say, there, there is a possibility that in that first epic staff meeting, a screen was flashed while I was processing what 12 things I needed to do in my classroom. I'm just gonna say, you know what I'm saying? Because there's so many screens flashing up there, you know, you're just like, okay, hand me another packet. You know what I'm saying? And sometimes they get open on the teacher desk sometimes. I, I'll be, I'm sorry, but that's.
So there, so what you're saying is you may have known this, that the evaluations, so now you're saying that? Okay.
I, I, I just am gonna say, but was there a, was there a?
Ms. Popple's here. Why don't we let her speak? Ms. Popple, can you tell me? Okay.
And this would have been the beginning of last year.
Right.
Not the beginning of this.
Right. Well, no, yeah, but every year they're supposed to review it. So she can look right, your assistant principal's right here, so we can see.
But this is based on last year's data. So you would think that it would have been last year's document.
Ms. Popple's looking for that information, Ms. Kreidler.
So was there a teacher in the Marzano training that had anything to say about?
No, ma'am, and there doesn't have to be. Not that I'm aware of. Was there a teacher in that training?
Yeah, that's why teachers.
There, there was not a teacher on that training, correct? No, because it's for evaluations for, for, how to evaluate.
I don't know anyone in any other profession that has 50% of their evaluation based on something they have minimal control of.
Growth.
So can I ask a question, Ms. Bashir?
Go ahead.
Can I ask a question, Superintendent Bashir? I understand the instrument that we use is a local decision. But correct me if, I mean, I know I'm just coming in and I, I had to come off my phone, so I didn't get to hear the ending of the public, um, input. But when we went to performance pay, that was a legislative decision, right? Okay, so that, that was legislative. And so technically, again, that's a D O E that's coming down to us. Now, they pretty much telling us that that's something we have to do in regards to evaluating our teachers.
But they're correct in what they're saying, like.
Right, but I'm saying what we're utilizing, that's what we choose. So that's what I'm saying. That's not technically, I mean, I understand the concern coming to us because we're the board and this is a concern we need to be aware of. But I just wanna make sure also, too, that you guys do understand that locally we choose our instrument. But as far as that regulation, that's not a local choice, right? That, that's what I'm saying. The present is a local choice, but far as teachers being evaluated, that's coming from D O E, right? Okay. Well, no, I just was concerned because the comment was, that's why teachers are leaving. And so again, I'm not downplaying the concern because I think it's a valid concern, but also too, my concern is always in when stuff come to the board, it always make it seem that a lot of stuff is a local control. And a lot of stuff is not a local control. There's federal regulations, there's state regulations. So we can be aware of this, having this feedback in regards to what we choosing locally. But also too, you gotta understand that statute regulates our decisions as well. So that's why I'm just making sure I understood when the superintendent said it was a local choice. Because I just wanted to understand what was the local part, far as what was the state part.
And Ms. Pugh, now, something else that gets published regularly, and, and Ms. Pugh, help me out here if I'm wrong on this. Something else that gets published is usually by Calney, the Department of Education will publish. And I don't know if they've done this lately, but they used to publish how many teachers are in each category. So highly effective, effective, and so on. And so we've been questioned before, you have a lot of highly effective teachers.
Right. Right, and that's always been my concern as a board member, too. But again, evaluations don't come to the board. So that stays under administration and administration regulates how effectively that's been done at each site level. But that has always been a concern of mine, is if we got so many highly effective teachers, why does the data, and I'm not putting that all on teachers by no means, because again, there's different things that come into play. So that's why I was asking that question since she made that comment.
I've got one more question. If that's the case, if it's locally controlled as far as the percentages, is there something in there you could put that says, okay, the child didn't come to school at all? So how, I, and I thought, I thought I understand somebody explained that to me one time, that you, they don't, they don't put them in that evaluation if they miss so many days. Like if, if they come in the middle of the year, they're not gonna be evaluated for that, that year. And I don't understand how all that works, but could it not be something that we can?
That's, that's, so they don't, so they don't get, for that student, if they are not there for both F T Es, they are not a part of their calculation. And the D O E, when they give teachers the VAM, that's part of their big statistical analysis is that, like, it's supposed to count for students who have, um, who are trying issues. Okay.
So your primary, for example. But in the evaluation systems, it's tied and how will they, how will we provide student growth?
Fast.
So they were, so their principals calculate their student
And for primary, gotcha.
Yes, for the primary, teachers that don't get a VAM from the state. If they were only here a half a year and that child is not calculated in the VAM. But all the other subjects, like, uh, third grade usually doesn't get a um, so their principal pulls that from star. Calculate that and it's all kept up on a chart. That is usually stated in the, how those non-VAM teachers still get their student growth. Uh, a lot of the middle school and high school, if they're not that P E teacher gets rated as a C, then they get two points on their student.
I guess my, my, my main thing is how can we protect the fact that they're not in control of what they're being, being judged for? And Well, if we're in the
I get emotional because I think about that as a principal, oh my God, all these things happen. So is anybody at the state thinking? County just had a severe did, uh, they take into consideration I S page or up down in October, how those things do and how they affect those students. So, yeah, I wonder, does D O E?
But do we take that into consideration? Cause again, D O E is not telling us, but D O E is not telling us how we measure. So I think that's something we have to get better on in making sure, again, what we're utilizing, how is it benefit us as a district? Because if this is something that's impacting us more than it happened in another county, D O E is not gonna be concerned. But if it's something that's truly impacting our county, I thought that's why we have all these different things in place. I myself, again, when it said that we was gonna be doing progress monitoring three times a year, I couldn't understand why we as a district would continue to do the extra progress monitoring. But I was told from administrative basis, y'all wanted to be able to measure the data so it would help you guys to kind of project how a kid would do. But again, if we're just paying for software, if we're just paying for programs and we're not consistently evaluating and measuring it, it hurting us. So, I mean, I think that's something we gotta get tighter on as a district.
I do, I have a Marzano question. So, and if memory serves me, we started with Marzano seven, eight years ago.
Longer than that.
Longer than that?
Yes.
So we haven't decided to evaluate that?
Well, if you look at the D O E website and all the counties
Marzano's.
Again, I, I get that, Kiki, but again, I go back to the analysis of the hurricane. It's a thousand houses in this county. Just because some person chose a chop don't mean I'm not gonna file my insurance claim. So again, I get there's things out there. I don't agree with reinventing the will. But again, how does that benefit us? There's nothing wrong with it, but how is it benefiting us? And that's what I'm saying.
I think, I don't think it's the
That data don't come to us as a board. Well, I'm, I'm just, y'all talking about it. So I'm just saying, I'm not just harping on that, but I'm saying even some other decisions that have been made from a state and county basis. Again, there's nothing wrong in researching what another district does, but how does it benefit us?
I know I'm lying, but if we can have the boxes, I'm sorry, I'm lying. But it, you know, I'd say I wouldn't say anything else, but if we have the boxes and we have the program and we can do the check offs here locally, can't we have the right procedure for that to take into account certain things that will affect that score somehow? Can, I mean, it's a program. You, you know, what you put in is very important. Is what you get out. And if we're putting in the, what this generic whatever and not really putting in what really is going on, is there not a way to do that?
I don't wanna go too far to the left on this because you've heard one point of view. I don't think that's correct. I don't think that's the right. Um, I think everything these teachers have said is absolutely heart wrenching that they didn't know. I think that what their points have been very well made, you know, hey, we had all these things, like Ms. Kreidler said, we had all these things happen, but y'all, like, y'all didn't take that into account. I think that's fair, Ms. Kreidler. I think that's a very fair statement. And I'm gonna be honest, I don't think we did consider that. Yes, yes, ma'am.
I would gladly accept 33%, which is what it has, what it has been. You know what I'm saying? It was a slap today to people who take very seriously their profession and their standing in their profession. And I get that I missed the slide. I'm not gonna say that Mr. Popple didn't put it up there. I'm not gonna say that because but in the year that we have had, to then get whacked at 50% and dropped in, in what your, is online to the whole world to go to, you can type in Ms. Kreidler's name and see if I'm effective or needs improvement or highly effective.
What do you feel like, what do you, here's, here's what I will say. We're not gonna go so far to the left that we don't realize that our students should be able to make a year's worth of growth. I'm not talking about going from a one to a three, but if they are in your classroom for 180 days and they are here the majority of the time, it is an expectation that they grow for a year. Can we at least agree on that? That's what that evaluation system should be judging. Did I, did my students who came to school? That, that's, I think that that's what we can all agree on. The kids that are there every day, that they had a year's worth of growth. Because we can't lose sight that we're here for students. Students first.
Okay, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Okay, thank you. Yes.
This is not a place for that. You can ask that, Ms., but that's not an action item. I mean, that's something that Ms. Pugh could discuss with her leaders. What I'm most worried about was that here we are in the second year of this evaluation system and these teachers are telling me they didn't even know that it had changed. That's a concern for me. That's a huge concern.
But the district website says 33%.
Okay, so the district website.
The concern was that y'all didn't know. So I, I, it was, right, if it was published, the information was there, but how was it that it wasn't aware?
It's kind of like saying that you don't know something's happening at a board meeting just because you didn't attend, right? But the board meeting happened and things are discussed in a board meeting. That doesn't negate the fact that, that that happened. I mean, the website might not have been updated. Maybe, maybe it wasn't. That might have been, um, an error on our part, but that doesn't negate the fact that these things were discussed and this should have been done. You don't rely on the website to tell you how to teach. You rely on your curriculum and you rely on your administrators and your coaches. You don't rely on that website. So I don't believe that's a valid argument.
Okay, Ms. Mathis, we need to wind this down. I know the concerns have been made and they're real. Um, Ms. Mathis.
So my second question is, our, our first question is, only question, do we have a comparison? Do we know how other districts, when they look at their evaluations, many districts use Marzano, Marzano. So do we know how they do that? Do they have a 50% in there? Do we, do we have any kind of comparison for, within? And I, and I would never wanna override, you know, the administrators.
Like they're, if they went to trainings and stuff, PD. You got those 10 points.
So if the principals made a decision, and I'm not saying they didn't, but was that communicated down to the teachers and the staff?
That's what we're, this is Kiki and I's first time of hearing this.
Supposedly introduced.
But in, when you guys received the evaluation, and I don't know if you receive it, but is there a way to measure whether or not that's been done?
What does that repeat that?
That administrator is sitting down with the teacher to make sure the teacher is aware of the evaluation and anything that's changing.
Don't they sign something in the first couple of weeks?
And a year ago was when D O E was still in the elementary school, right? Okay, I, I just wanted, cause I know that's another factor in the matter.
I think I would recommend that they sign every year that they have went through the training and they understand it.
And I do agree with what they're saying, maybe since Jerry, but maybe that's something with the principals and some are saying our reports are due to D O E. I can always reach out and say, hi. But all of these evaluations are due 10 different codes in, how they're evaluated, what their evaluation was, what was the percentage, blah, blah, blah. And all of that is due by the end of this month.
Well, I'm talking about going forward.
But, no, but I, I, I
Can we not make?
Want to take into consideration what they're saying. And like Jerry said, can we?
And like Jerry said, can we negotiate?
Danny, I got a question.
This time next year, whenever this training comes about, when we have new teachers and we have people that move around to different places.
Every year, it has to happen.
I'm talking about this next year coming up, twenty-five. We need to have them sign something that they got the training.
Well, since this came as public comment, Chairman Lundy, is there some type of direction we can give to Superintendent Bishir's in regards to evaluating this whole process? Because I think she has made a valid point. Now that feedback is coming from instruction, I think this would give her the opportunity to take this feedback, but as well go back to her administrators in regards to this whole process and how it could be addressed. But make sure we address it from every aspect and not just one part. So is there any type of direction we can give?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we've, we've heard been a lot said, but a lot of concerns brought out. And so I think there's some areas that probably needs to be certainly looked into and maybe massaged or changed if possible. And, and there also, I, you know, and we don't want to get into this discussion right now, but the other concern was the level three, and we need to be looking at that also. All right, okay, thank you. Is anyone else that would want to address the board this evening?
Have those concerns, I do have a question. I do have a question. Those concerns that you all mentioned about the level threes, have you spoke, I noticed your dean's here tonight. Have y'all spoken to your dean or your administration at your school? But your deans are the one who wrote the discipline matrix. Yes, all the deans did. Jerry, you've received pay for that, those meetings at time. You were invited to be part of it, but you were teaching summer school, correct? You were teaching summer school. I have the email. Okay. The deans, the deans came, Ms. Crowder, just for information, with the exception of Mr. Bev, who was teaching summer school during the month of June. He came in July after the other deans had already met and gotten together and changed a lot of things. He came in and wrapped it all up. He saw everything. He put it in a package for us, but he wasn't a part of those discussions, according to him. So nevertheless, the deans got together this summer. Like that wasn't, we did not do that. We let the deans come in and we said, you tell us what's best for these kids. Like what do you see that's fair? So they changed a lot of things. They did some common language. They're trying to get on the same page about some stuff because they're the ones who had to process the referrals.
Well, not only that, the reason they wanted to be consistent is because when a child changes from one school to the other, they know what's expected.
So you haven't spoken to anyone at your school yet?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
I did talk to Ms. Webber this summer. I was working on the... Had the copy of it. I was going through it. I'm an editor. I like to edit.
Awesome.
There was a lot of paragraphs that were, I said, give me that, let me edit that. And it was big. And I got about, I got to the cellphone policy. I'm, I'm going to speak at that for me. I'm tired of cellphones at the high school, sorry. My high schooler said, please don't do that. If you get that changed, I'll be there. So, um... I'm about to tell them. But I did read through that and I started reading through the district. And I did go to the... Didn't inform you, somebody said, well, I was at summer school and he didn't hear the news and he wasn't part of the writing up of it. So...
But that is what this meeting, that is public comment. So if the things that you have concerns about, we definitely should be discussing all that discipline matrix before we adopt it. We've had it out there for the required time. And more, because it wasn't, as Ms. Joffrey, I think, reminded us, it wasn't put on the website. So we let, made sure that it stayed out there the full thirty minutes, but I've gotten nothing in writing. So, you know, you can talk about it here, but you just mentioned something about a cellphone. So I don't, just, is y'all's main concern the level threes and field trips? Is that the main thing? Okay, gotcha.
Can I ask a question about the level threes, though?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, how do we address level threes when it comes to other student activities, far as sports and clubs? Because if we're going to address it far as field trips, I think it need to be addressed across the board. But also my concern is, again, we do have a discipline matrix for a reason in regards to address discipline issues. And again, to my understanding, ever since we've always had this document, it's a living will, it always has the opportunity to change. And every year, administration will go in there and review the discipline and review the matrix and decide if their inning needs to be in a changes, updates or whatever. But I guess my also concern is too, I thought when it came to field trips in certain grade levels, and I always thought with the NASA field trip, that a parent had to go on that trip in order for the child to go. That's not the case? Right, but I also thought that it's always been a rule at you guys' school, if it came to a certain referral, a certain type of referral, that a student wouldn't be allowed to go on that trip. Okay.
You know, they can make a level one or two referral. I even had a student last year, you know, we had two, it's in the paperwork that you can't go and get two, but we were working with his family. We wanted, he was behaving, he was doing, NASA was his ticket to get him to behave. So we gave him a second chance. So, I mean, we're, we're here for kids. We want them to go, but if they're going to be making like really major fractions, then they can't go that far away.
And it's the same with the SeaWorld triple four. We gave them, they could have one or two. It's the same policy. We use the same policy.
Okay.
All right, that's, that's something else that we need to be looking into. Okay, all right, thank you. As we move on down into the agenda this afternoon, all the consent items were approved by the adoption of the agenda. And this brings us down to item fifteen point oh-two, which is a public hearing this evening for action item on our twenty-four, twenty-five student code.
Mr. Lundy, hold on. No, we're still at, we're, have you gotten Mr. Reyes presenting? Have I?
I didn't see it, did we?
He is supposed to be presenting. I think it was left off of the...
We got it, we got a presentation.
We do have a presentation. That's why Mr. Reyes, you're from Steen Hatchie.
But I didn't, it's, it's not on the agenda.
I'm sorry, it was supposed to be on the agenda. That wasn't oversight, yes, sir.
We got a presentation.
I mean, he does love coming up here, but...
All right.
You've been very patient, come on up.
Steen Hatchie School.
And this is the first of the grade presentations.
Right.
We're going to have one every week.
All right, well, thank you Superintendent Bishir's, members of the board, for allowing us down on the coast to come up here and share a little bit about our school. Kind of out of sight, out of mind at times. So I thank y'all for this opportunity. No, I know, I failed y'all on that for sure. All right, so this is just to revisit last year's data. So this is twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school data. I use the same format that we've used in the past as far as the material that I'm sharing today. And it should be similar to what the other schools are going to be sharing moving forward, something along these lines. So I always like to throw in a picture of our little crew down there. Last, right before last Christmas, the, the American Legion got together and purchased hoodies for all of our kids. And so we got them all together and did a group picture there. So we're thankful for that. The next portion of the presentation is revisiting the last several years as far as school grades go. So I was going to go through that. So, starting in the twenty-twenty-one school year, the grade that's presented at know-year schools, this is just a screenshot off of that, was a grade of an A. And then in twenty-one, twenty-two, let me go back, make sure I got that. So that's twenty-twenty-one. Twenty-one, twenty-two was also an A. I want to say it's about the same score. And then we had the first year of FAST came after that. And so this was like a provisional kind of a grade, like the first time through. And so growth was not counted in this particular year. It was just based on percentage scoring three or higher. And so, so we scored an A that year. I want to say it was like a seventy-three. And then I'm having trouble with my eyes. So I got a copy over here, so let me look at that. So, yeah, seventy-three. And then this past year, our school grade was a seventy-nine A. So the configuration was a little bit different for us than it is for the other schools in the district in that we're such a small school, we don't have enough in a category for lower quartile learning gains. So what we have is level three or higher, and then we have just learning gains, but not lower quartile by themselves. And so under ELA, English Language Arts, our score was seventy percent of students scoring three or higher in grades three through five. And then learning gains were at eighty-four percent. Now, as been mentioned before, learning gains, when it comes to school grades, it's only going to count when a student takes a test for the second time. So either a third grader repeating third grade or a student that took it in third and then again in fourth and fifth. And so for ELA, it was eighty-four percent of our students making a learning gain. And then for the first time ever, third grade stands alone as its own category as far as students scoring level three or higher. And so for our third graders last year, sixty-five percent scored a level three or higher. Moving over to math, eighty-four percent scored three or higher in grades three through five. And then eighty-four percent made a learning gain. And then in science, eighty-six percent of our fifth graders scored three or higher. So any questions about that for you?
Yes, I have a question on Mr. Reyes. Your gains far as your level threes and fives, do you have any data in regards to your gains far as your level ones and twos?
It's, as far as the state goes, they are all together. So you can make a gain from being a, so level one's broken into three parts. And so you can go from a low level one to a middle level one, and that's a learning gain. Or a middle to a high level one, and that's a learning gain. As far as the numbers of students that I had that made a learning gain as a level one, I don't have that data to share with you at this time. But I could, you know, go back and look at that.
Yeah, is that some data? Because I would be interested in seeing that.
K-12 lift provided that. You have that with your K-12 lift stuff that shows that.
You ain't got to be in a hurry, but I, I am interested in knowing that data as well.
So I understand the reason you don't have it is because there wasn't enough in that cell to have overall. But if you look at your, the K-12 lift data, I think, I think Jimmy and I could be wrong, but I think that'll show you everybody who made...
So just to make sure I understand the question, you would like to know how many of the level ones made a learning gain? How many of the level twos made a learning gain like that?
Because I mean, I know you guys still measure that, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I can go back and look at that. I mean, it's just, it's not a, how the state does it for the school grade. They just considered all the same. Either you're level one and you make a learning gain, or if you're a level five, you can even lose skill score points as long as you remain a level five.
Right.
That's a learning gain. So this is just looking at the total picture.
I guess I was more interested in regards to the school improvement plan that each school did and just how you measure the data overall in regards to how y'all develop your school improvement.
The lowest twenty-five percent, but some of his, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but I know some of your grade levels, there were no level ones and twos.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay.
But there were, you know, there were some, but I know that when I looked at some of the grade level data...
There was one particular grade level.
...that didn't have any level ones or twos, so... It's a good problem to have.
Well, and again, I...
But we are measuring that data. Okay, so that's...
The K-12 lift shows, like you said, everybody, which this looks at it one way.
Yeah, I mean, our goal is for every student to make a learning gain, whether they're a one or a, a three. We want them all to make a learning game. And again, this is, we're a different animal, if you will, than the other schools. So this is, you know, just our school and how we approach things. And it's no bearing on anybody else.
Yeah, but my question, and not to repeat myself, but not typically when the data is brought to us, you guys bring it to us based off the testing, right? And the grade. But I think it's very rarely, I know one year, Alicia, you did go in there and you got real detail with the data. And it was showing us what level ones and twos had made some increases. But I know typically when this report come to the board, it's mainly based off the, the testing. But for me, I am interested in seeing just what we're measuring overall because I know we have different software and different things. And as we just heard tonight, all this data is still being used at some point. So I think it's good for us as the board to be able to see that data as well.
And we can, and we can, and I can bring you the district data as far as, like I was saying, K-12 lift kind of does a little bit differently.
Okay.
And it will show district-wide. Like our lowest kids and what percentage at what grade level made, I think is what you're asking from them. We can do that.
Yeah.
No, no problem.
Yeah, so like, as far as FAST goes, though, I would only be able to share that for, primarily for fourth and fifth grade because these are ones that have taken the test and have a score that we're looking at to see if they grew or not. All right, we do get a little bit more detail on the next slide. And so one of the things that Superintendent Bishir's asked us to do maybe a month or so ago was to develop, you know, in the elementary schools, middle and high, it's pretty common to have a school grade. However, in my K to two, the primary school, things like that, we, they don't really have a school grade. So we were tasked with trying to get like an estimate using the same kind of methodology that they use for school grades in third through fifth to come up with something. And so that's what this is showing. That way you get a picture of not just my upper grades, but all of the school. And so this is pre-K through second grade. This is based off of their STAR data. There are enough students using this methodology to have a lower quartile. And so that's why there is a lower quartile category for them. So just, you know, going across the bottom under VPK to second grade, and this is just an estimate, sixty-eight percent of the students scored three or higher on reading. Seventy-six percent were projected to be a learning gain. In the lower quartile learning gain, that was eighty-five percent. So that would capture a little bit of what you were asking as far as kids that were in the lower parts and whether or not they grew in those, in those particular grades.
Okay, thank you.
In math achievement, these are students that would on STAR score three or higher. One, just on a little side, the state did give us a conversion now so we can convert a skill score from STAR to make it similar to the level system that's used in the upper grades. So math achievement was seventy-two percent. And math learning gains was fifty-nine. And the lower quartile math learning gains were forty-six. So that kind of shows you that in math in these lower grades, the lower leveled students didn't grow as much as overall the students as a whole did when it comes to math. And so you add those categories up, get your average, and it comes out to a sixty-eight, which would meet the, the scales necessary for an A in the Florida grading system. And so these other categories, we've kind of shown them already. But again, it was seventy-one percent three or higher in third through fifth, eighty-four percent with a learning gain. That standalone category was sixty-five. Eighty-four percent three or higher in math. Eighty-four percent made a learning gain. And then eighty-six percent in science for a seventy-nine A. That's the school grade. That was our projection, and then the state came in with the same score.
Can I ask a question real quick, Jimmy? When I'm looking at that first column, the pre-K, and it's...
Yeah.
Am I reading it a forty out of fifty-nine? What does that mean?
Okay, so what that's doing is that's taking every single kid. There was fifty-nine kids in each of those grade levels total. And so forty of them scored a three or higher. So forty out of the fifty-nine would be a sixty-eight percent. And so that's how points are determined within the school grading system.
So you're saying you had fifty-nine in...
In pre-K through...
And second?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So how did you come up with the four hundred and six?
Okay, so each of the categories get totaled together. So sixty-eight plus seventy-six plus eighty-five totals up to four or six. You're just finding the average of it.
All right, okay, thank you. All right, okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, so something that, you know, is a little bit easier to see visually. We have a, a bar graph here for each grade level that's showing kids that scored three or higher in, um, in both reading and math. The gray bar is the sixty-two point bar, which is what's needed to be an A. So that's our reference point. So you can see in kindergarten, both in reading and math, they were exceeding the sixty-two. Whereas in first grade, they were both slightly below the sixty-two. In second grade, they exceeded it in math, but they were a little below it in reading. In third grade, they both exceeded. Fourth grade was our highest performing group. We had, um, I want to say a hundred, a hundred percent of our kids in fourth grade math scored a three or higher. And then in fifth grade, it's showing that they, they're higher in math, but both of them exceeded the, that benchmark of sixty-two that we've set. Now, a little bit different picture, I wanted to do more than just the three or higher, but also show learning gains. And so that's what this one shows and you see that it's not quite as rosy of a picture when we look at it through that lens. Kindergarten is very similar to what they were as far as learning gains versus proficiency or scoring three or higher. First grade, they actually exceeded it where they, they didn't in numbers three or higher. They did when it comes to learning gains, so over sixty-two percent of them made a learning name. In second grade though, you see that the news isn't quite as good. While we made a lot of growth in reading, and that was a focus for us last year, was our second grade cohort in reading. We put a lot of resources into them. The math is, is way, well below what our expectations are. And then, um, in third grade, both groups grew lower than the sixty-two benchmark. But in, both in fourth and fifth, they exceeded it.
So do you know what's going on with the second graders with math?
I, I think we really emphasized reading to the detriment of math, knowing that we had to get it fixed before third grade. But when they rolled into third grade, although they made tremendous gains as second graders, I don't think they did a whole lot of reading over the summer because we got our work cut out for us again.
Oh, okay.
As third graders. All right, any other questions?
Jimmy, I, I have a question. So when you say we have our work cut out for us as third graders.
We're those third graders, yeah.
In math, right?
Well, in reading.
And reading?
Mm-hmm. Math too, but we're going to really focus on reading.
So, so last year's second graders are this year's third graders.
Right.
So when, when you look at the, the way they ended in math, in third grade, how will you address that?
Well, I mean, the thing of it is, let me back up a slide. Look at them as second graders in math. There are actually a higher percentage of them scoring three or higher. So their actual performance wasn't bad. What was bad was their growth rate.
Right.
Yeah. And so we've got, uh, so it's not necessarily a, math is better as a inner third grade. If you compare them to the state average, math looks better than reading does. They just didn't grow as fast last year in math. And I think it's because we put so much into our, our reading with them. And it was a, a first year teacher new to our school and all. So I mean, there's, there's, I'll, so let me throw this in. We did our district walkthroughs today. And, um, this teacher, our second grade teacher, Jill Rutter, Director for Instruction was like, wow, she is so much better now than she was last year. So she's growing. It just, it takes time to develop those skills.
And her classroom is amazing too. I went and saw it. It's, the theme is lights. So she has all these lit sections in the room with revolving lights, but, um, not to say that, I love classrooms. I can't help it, y'all. But, um, I know how hard she's tried, yeah. So I'm not surprised to see that kind of, that Jill saw that kind of growth.
Yeah.
Jimmy, can you go back to the other slide that you said Alicia had you guys to do?
Okay, yep.
Um, and I don't know, you might could go back to the other one too, but like, just like with this one, like far as, um, a third through fifth grade, since that is our testing grade. Just like I was asking in regards to the ones and twos, but like, for instance, which are three, fours and fives. Um, I know you're measuring the gains, but are you seeing anything in regards to maybe if a student may have scored, um, a five, but they may have dropped like in third or fourth grade? Like if they was in third and fourth grade and scored a five?
We're talking about a really small number of students that we're pulling this data from. So, you know, take it with a grain of salt, but our fives, we've got a few and they all, I want to say all of them maintain their five.
All of them maintain their five, okay.
What about your attendance?
Well, that's one of the things that we're going to get to. But it wasn't, it's not, it's regressing honestly over the last few years at our school. All right, so I mean, I shared these goals with the board at the beginning of last year. So I think it's only fair to go back and show them again. Our goal, which is, you know, really ambitious goal is for ninety percent of our students to make a full year's learning gain based on PM three prior year to PM three of that current year. And we wanted a ninety-five percent attendance rate for our students and staff. And we didn't hit them. So we had in grades four and five, which is where we, you know, the state measures the growth there. We had eighty-four percent of students make a full year's learning gain. There was exactly the same in both reading and math, um, as far as PM three. And then our number was actually less than ninety percent for our students as far as attendance rate goes.
Do you think it was because of storms and stuff?
I don't, I really don't know. That could have played a role in it. I just think people's mindset's about coming to school and all are.
Is very different.
Yes, it's not getting better, it don't seem like.
And I think that starts at home because I could speak for myself, like even last week with that, what we had to deal with. Neither one of my kids wanted to go to school, but I told them as a district, we knew that things was, you know, what we needed to know and I made them go to school. So I, I just think that starts at home, but I know this year this would be us going back without having an truancy officer. And I know the last few years, we did have a truancy officer. And I know I have asked, um, Angela and Ms. Beshears, where are we at with truancy? Because for, since I've been on the board, I know that's been a big issue for us. And I know the state has made some changes, but being that we put use of our ESRA money to hire truancy officers, I thought we would see some improvement. But it doesn't look like we really did. So I'm just wondering like Jimmy, what, what did you have in place far as the twenty-three, twenty-four year? When you was measuring this data over the school term in regards to how was you addressing attendance far as students and our teachers and staff?
Every day we have an attendance drawing. So if a kid gets there, if they're, they're at school, they're entered into the drawing, they get their name drawn, they come up and get it, something out of the treasure box. Every month, we have perfect attendance drawings for staff and students where we're giving them prizes and trying to encourage them, you know, as much as we can. So I, I feel like we're, and I've brought it up, even when the district would come and visit my school, that's something that they would give me ideas on. And we try to our best to implement and all, but.
Did you have to do any conferences with any?
Yeah, we did as far as, um, and we, we did work with Ed Witten and truancy and all and some of the students. We, I even told some of those kids, you know, if you come here, somebody gave me the idea in a SAC meeting. Promise them, promise them subway if they come to your, for like three or four straight days. And it worked the first time. It didn't work again. You know, but we're trying to think outside the box and do what we can because we really see the value in attendance of, you know, when a kid misses, that's, that's one kid in the classroom. When a teacher misses, that's every kid missing that teacher for that particular day. So staff attendance is really important as well.
Now, as we all know, nothing breeds success like success, and we're seeing the product of that here in our district now. And I just wonder sometimes, we used to, when I was in school, we used to have student of the week. And if that student was there every day that week, they got to wear the button till the end of the next week and somebody else was crawling as student of the week.
That might work.
I mean, that's, you know, not probably on.
If they had a button that nobody else had, that would be big.
Yeah, that was big. Back then it was. And, and it was really a, um, a want, that people wanting to get perfect attendance.
Yeah.
I mean, they really wanted to. I mean, I think there was, I can't remember Sammy, Sammy didn't miss hardly any school. But, um, back then you didn't have to worry about all the things we have to worry about now, so.
Okay, go ahead. All right, just one more thing on attendance while I'm just thought about, because one of our classes today got this. Every day that every kid's in the classroom, we spell out attendance. I think I shared this with y'all before, but we spell out the word attendance on the board. And so if everybody's there, you're on the A, then you move to the T. And so by the time you get to the E at the end, every kid has been there for those days. And so fourth grade was able to get theirs, I think. Today, they, they reached the, the E for attendance. So that's another, just another thing we're trying. So we're, we're trying, you know, a lot of different ways to try to encourage attendance. But I'm going to try that button thing. I like that deal, that one.
Student of the week.
All right. Just reflecting back on last year's data, our pluses were that the students scored above the state average on FAST in third, fourth and fifth in every subject area. And then another thing that we measure is how do they grow compared to their peers around the state? Here's what I mean by that. On PM one, what is that class's average skill score compared to the average skill score of the state? And that's information we have now through, through Todd. It shares that information with us. And so what we found is that our kids were gaining skill score points faster than the other kids around the state in each of the grade levels. So that was something that we were proud of. And then some of the deltas were the learning gains for second grade math, which we've already discussed. That was our lowest performance subject area and we did not meet our attendance goals. So looking forward into twenty-four, twenty-five, our goal is again for ninety percent of students to make a full year's learning gain. It's happened in some of our classes. Fourth grade math had a hundred, you know, I, I want to say like ninety-one percent. It wasn't a hundred percent three or higher. I think it was like ninety-one percent learning gains. Kindergarten also had, had hit that goal, so it's possible. So we want to keep that as a, a goal again. And then we didn't hit it this last time, so we're going to try again at the ninety-five percent or greater attendance rate for students and staff. So here's our challenges that we're seeing is, um, the incoming third graders, which we've already discussed, according to PM one FAST, they're eleven points below the state average in reading. And so that's, you know, that's pretty major for us. Typically, we're at or above state average, so. And it's the largest class that we have. We only have, like you know, one class per grade level. That particular class has twenty-two kids in it. And so it's, um, a, a bigger challenge for that reason as well. Ninety-one percent attendance rate is what we're tracking at right now. We want to get to ninety-five, but through the first five weeks, we're at ninety-one. I think we've had a lot of sickness and stuff going through. I think a lot of schools have. And then, you know, of course, we had last week that plays into that as well. All right, and so again, I'm just talking about Steen Hatchie School and what's made a difference for us. Just a couple of things wanted to, to hit on as we close out here. To me, the difference maker for us going back over the last six years has been super focused on standards-based instruction. I've shared this slide before, but as long as it's true, I'll keep sharing it. We really believe in aligning the standards with a learning target, having what you're using to show that they have learned it in alignment and having something that you can use to measure that success criteria, to make sure that they're on track to master the standard. And then the second thing, if you've listened to K-12 Lift at all, they really talk a lot about collective teacher efficacy. But I really think over the last six years, we've had that. I hope to have it moving forward. But here's what I mean by that. I'll just read it very quickly. It's when educators share a sense of collective efficacy. It says, "School cultures tend to be characterized by beliefs that reflect high expectations for student success." "I shared language that represents a focus on student learning as opposed to instructional compliance." It often emerges. "The perceptions that influence the actions of educators include we are evaluators, we are change agents, we collaborate." "Teachers and leaders believe that it is their fundamental task to evaluate the effect of their practice on students' progress and achievement." "They also believe that success and failure in student learning is more about what they did or did not do." "And they place value in solving problems of practice together." And so basically collective efficacy is we believe that we're going to make a difference.
And you did it good.
And then just the evidence to back that up, just very quickly. This is John Hattie. He's a well-known, um, education analyst and all. And so he shows the effect size of collective teacher efficacy. And you can see it far exceeds their prior achievement, whether or not they're, um, you know, we're a school-wide, Title I school, you know, like everybody else in the district, but seventy-five to eighty percent in poverty. Home environment, parental involvement, motivation, even homework. So collective teacher efficacy is the difference maker. It's just at a small school, it don't take as many people getting that mindset right to make it happen as it does at larger schools. So it's really a culture shift that we're talking about. All right, and so what captures that, I think that collective efficacy is achieving excellence together. And that's our motto for this year. We're going to pass T-shirts out to the kids this week that have that on it, that we're achieving excellence together. And any questions?
I do got one more question, Jimmy. As far as your attendance, um, I know we have like, you know, we have a policy and we have procedures in place, but, um, like how effectively, like do you, um, are you managing, um, how you as administration and staff is addressing like the, um, keeping your eyes on attendance, like the first time a student missed and a second time? Like is there anything particularly you have in place that, you know, keeps it right there in your face?
Well, I mean, one of the things I do is we always in, within Focus, one of the things that pops up for a principal is you see the kids that are out. So you're going to see that on a daily basis. And so you're going to ask questions to your parent liaison, of notice this kid's been out several days. The other avenue is the teachers, they're, they notice when kids are out because they feel like this kid's my responsibility.
Right.
And so they're reaching out, like what can we do to get a hold of this parent to make sure that they're in school?
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Just, that's our, that's our new emblem right there.
Stingray, you're not catching stingrays, you're catching, what was it? Tarpe?
Tarpe.
James, James called it tarpe.
Boo, shorters, that's what you're catching.
Boo shirts and tarpe.
Any other questions for Jimmy?
Just thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Jimmy.
Please stop by for a visit.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Sounds good.
We've got to have a meeting down there.
Yeah, let's have two.
Okay. With that said, let's move on down now to our, uh, action item on fifteen point oh-two, which is a public hearing, uh, for our twenty-four, twenty-five student code of conduct and discipline matrix. So this is a public hearing. Do we have anyone in, from the public who would like to address the board on this, uh, item this evening? Yes, ma'am?
Again, I say, I, I voice my concern as a.
Level three referrals?
Yeah, no, that's the three referrals going in.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
But I am still in touch with all of my parents. Worked, so I have two years with these. I have had six different parents. They couldn't maybe tonight because of schedules and work and all that.
So let, let me ask this question. Is it the failure of appearing to the matrix? Or is it the allowance in the matrix for them? It's the allowance in the matrix? So it's not, is, okay, it's not that someone just kind of overrid that even though the matrix said this, but then someone says.
Correct. I believe that you feel that the matrix has changed.
It's the field trip criteria. It's not the matrix per se. It's the field criteria. That's the issue.
Okay.
I thought that, and I guess I'm wrong, because I never worked at the elementary school, I worked at the middle school, primary, middle, and high. But when we did a field trip as our teacher team got together and said, if you're gonna go, like, we went to Wild Adventures, let's just ours, we took our seventh graders to Wild Adventures, to be eligible to go on this field trip, you can have whatever it was, no, you know, nothing, we decided that.
And it has been that way in years past where the team decides, and the elementary school's always been cohesive, and had the same policy for third, fourth, and fifth. This year, it's no longer just for policy for field trip criteria. In the stadium from K through 12, this is the policy, and it's in the code of conduct.
We can't go.
Against that, because it is the same policy, it's in the handbook.
Well, no, the principal always has the right, always has the right to
Do we?
To do that. But I'm looking at the matrix and I'm trying to figure out, and I think it's gonna take some time. I think I'm gonna have to go back. You know what I mean? When I'm not looking at it on my phone and look and see. But we've always had the right to, you know, punish more or punish less or whatever. Principals always had that right. But we try not to because you want everything to be consistent. I mean, you want everything to be consistent. So when I'm looking at the discipline grid for K-12 and and it says field trips under there, and I'm assuming this was taken, I don't know where, I don't know where this was taken. I don't know if this was like, it seems like y'all probably, I haven't looked at it in a couple of weeks, okay? So where I see a field trips section there that says, "Classes may be scheduled to take field trips unless students demonstrate appropriate behavior prior to the trip will be allowed to attend. Policies for each grade level are as follows. A student can earn up to two minor, intermediate offense referrals. Please refer to level one and two offenses above for a list of minor and intermediate offenses and still be allowed to go on field trips. If a student earns a third minor offense referral, then they are ineligible. A student can earn one major offense referral. Please refer to the above list from level three offenses and still be eligible to attend a field trip. Student earns a second major referral, they are then ineligible. Any student earning a level four will not be eligible to attend." So that's what y'all were talking about, right? So
The one major, one major, yeah.
Right. So I guess what I'm asking is, so the, when we say, I'm just trying to look and see. So like, one of the things that's a level three would be, I don't know, I'm trying, like, leaving campus without permission, like, for older kids, right? So because, I mean, I know these little kids usually, not that you don't ever have any runners, but
But also in the three, you've got sexual misconduct.
Right, yeah, I was getting there. So, so I think that we're looking at it. Well, we also have a knife. I mean, we have a lot of things that are in there that seem to be, like, there's
But I guess my concern is
There's a big, a wide array of things in there. But I would never once Yeah.
Right. But I guess my concern is, like, again, as I stated tonight, since I've been on the board, this is a document re-review quite often. Like I said, even though I had questions this past year, because I know it got recommended and it seemed like it was on hold. But like, we have public hearings and like, this is the purpose of this hearing. And so I get your saying that these parents reached out to you, and I understand that there was a schedule, but we have been like advertising this for 28 days and before it came to us for 28 days to be advertised, like, it came to us and we reviewed it in this meeting and then this, it was sent back to the superintendent in regards to some concerns the board had, and then it got advertised. So I guess my concern is, it seemed like there's been time for these parents to reach out to the district in regards to the concerns that they're raising. No, I'm not talking about you. I'm talking about the parents. Right. So that's what I'm saying. This is the public hearing, but I'm saying it. I guess my concern is the severity of the concern. I get this was the meeting that it was scheduled on, but this has been advertised for 28 days. Anytime information does come to the board, we do direct it to the superintendent. So I guess if this has been concerned in the number of calls that came in, I know it's always they can reach out to the district, so we could address it. Now, this is the hearing for it, but I know we get emails all the time from people in regards to concerns. I got an email the other day and I forwarded it to the superintendent. So I guess that's the concern I'm having. I'm not downplaying it. I'm just saying if, it frustrates me sometimes as a board meeting that since I've been a board member, we have meetings twice a month. And some meetings get more attention than other meetings, but it doesn't seem like we get a lot of engagement in this platform that has been created for us to engage the concern from the public. I'm not saying just reach out to me. I'm saying engage this process as far as the public meeting, because we advertise this and that's why, and I'm always big about saying, let's make sure we advertise this so we can have public input. But when we have public input, if the public is not here to share that input, I mean, how do we address it?
I think I also, like, this was taken from the, this was in the other, the older matrix too. Y'all know that, right? This was in the previous one that we've been going on, like, like, it was literally copied and pasted from the, I'm looking at the prior one and it says exactly the same thing. Ma'am? No, no, I agree. I agree, but my comment, I don't want my comment to be missed here. This is not a new policy. This was the policy since 2020, because it's in the old matrix. If you, I've pulled it up right here, and it's exactly the same thing. I agree with you wholeheartedly. It's, would you like me to tell you what page it's on? Let me see. It is, well, I don't know if it has, it's right below the
Well, that was one reason why when the new document came, I asked, because in the past, when it came to us, we had that whole bit document and you could see where the changes occurred. But Ms. Bashir said that when, well, Superintendent Bashir's did state that it came from the deans, that they wanted something more cohesive, and that's why it came to us the way it did. But in the past, it has, it came to us one time with the lines. I remember it was marked through. And I remember asking, this looked tacky, but it came from Kiki that we wanted to show y'all where the changes was made, so.
And it could have been just carried over, like, in the wrong section, you know what I mean? I don't know, because it was under the, I mean, I'm looking for it in the different parts, and I see it in the other matrix. And I see it under the TAS section, which we don't even have TAS anymore. So I don't know when the deans were doing this or that we're putting this together, whatever, bringing it all together, if they accidentally cut that. I really don't know, y'all, that I can find out.
I'm sorry, go ahead. I was gonna say, so, so what is your suggestion? We go ahead and move forward?
I think we need to move forward, and then we need to amend it. I mean, I think that's what's fair. I think that's the right thing, because nobody's going on a field trip in the next two weeks, right? So I think we should be good. I don't think they've had that concern.
But you said the principal can override.
Absolutely, absolutely. But I think, I think we need to go ahead and go forth. And then I agree with what they're, absolutely agree with what they're saying. Like, it's, first of all, it shouldn't be, that, I don't even know that field trips should be singled out. I'm not sure that that should have even been singled out like that. I'm not sure that makes sense.
I just asked, we look at all activities and not just field trips?
Correct, correct. Playing sports, everything. And I think if we take that out, because I, I agree with, they want to be very careful, and I appreciate that. You don't want to, like, violate our discipline, I mean, our, our policy. Like, that's not what we do. That's what we've worked so hard to get to, is following the policy. So I think that, I think there's a good way to make all this just work out the way it should have been in the beginning.
You've got to have the policy so you know what to follow and what not to follow, and everybody's on the same page, we hope.
I just asked if you get with any administration and make any changes, parents are aware. Please don't let this get posted and a issue come up and they bring up this document and it's still in the document, because that would negate this whole tonight.
I think everybody, I mean, the, the issue of the levels and severity and the liberty to go on field trips or not. I mean, I think everybody's on the same page that, you know, gets to a certain point, you don't need to be out there going on these trips. But that's something that we need to, you know.
Well, yes, that's severe. We shouldn't be playing football on Friday nights either, like I think
That's why I asked, we need to go across all the sports and all the activities, every club. Don't just highlight one area.
So we're meeting as, the deans are meeting once a month now. You know, I told you all that was gonna happen. We had our first deans meeting last week. We're gonna do it again this coming up month, I mean, October, we'll have another meeting. So this will be something we can go back and look through again.
All right. So is there anyone else, though, of the public that would like to address the board on the district, on this matrix? Okay, if not, then what's the care of the board this, this evening?
I would make a motion to approve the student code of conduct and discipline matrix with the caveat that, you know, we will look and address the field trips or the activities.
Okay, all right. We have a motion to move forward with this. Ms. Agner seconds it then. All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? So care. Okay, aye. Ms. Mathis opposes, okay? All righty, I know that there's some other things in it that might be of concern to others, but there again, this is a living will. It's something that can be amended and, you know, and it's flexible. And so, but we do have this now as our matrix.
Anybody taking amendments? Bruna, you taking amendments?
I guess not.
Do we know why? I mean, Gina, are you on the record as to why you're opposing?
Well, I have been in past meetings. Y'all are well aware of why my opposition to the cell phone use
Okay.
High school.
Okay.
Okay, all righty. You had a cheerleader out there in the audience, so, okay.
Right.
All right, so it's been passed, and now it brings us down to items of interest, Ms. Superintendent.
Okay, so continuing to see lots of activities going on, lots of sports. I know that the middle school had senior night, eighth grade senior night tonight. Had senior night at the high school Friday night, where they secured another victory. Volleyball's also in session. They're kind of teetering back and forth, but everybody's working hard. Hope that everybody will also continue to support our band. You know, we've had, we've had Mr. Sals was here tonight, and he put a post on social media. I don't know if y'all saw it.
I saw it.
But he wants, like, this fervor that we've suddenly gotten, you know, this excitement for our sports programs. You know, I agree with him. I hope that we're gonna, I hope we'll load up a bus and go to MBAs whenever the band competes. You know what I mean? Like, so I think that's important, not just looking at one area, but I'll agree with.
The cheerleaders and the band and everything is part of the football team.
Very proud of, I mean, I'm not trying to take away. I'm very proud of the football teams. The program, it's, it's going awesome. It's one even better than we could have even imagined. So I'm very excited about that. Lots of concerns brought up, very valid concerns tonight, and some very fair points discussed. I mean, I do think we had a lot happen in our community last year, and I don't have any doubt that our students' learning was affected. Do want to remind everybody that these struggles, you know, when we, when we look at this data, we should be able to see that those data points, not just in one school, but we should see that in all schools. And so as we go back and we think about these and we talk about this, and we'll meet with our principals and our APs, that is one thing that Ms. Peel and I will pull. We will pull data and make sure that these, can't just look at one school and say, all these things happened and our data was affected because of this. Is that what happened district-wide?
Right.
And if not, then it's telling a different story. So that's, that's what we have to look at. We have to be mindful to see if, you know, what the real root cause was for any kind of data, because that's what we're looking at. We're looking at trends and we're looking at pattern. So that's what we'll say whenever we pull that. And we will do a we will remind everyone what their duties are as far as going back, and you can't just slap something up in a slide. I heard that mentioned a couple of times, what might have been a slide. That's not acceptable. It's a big deal, and that's not okay. And I don't want our teachers to feel like they've been short-changed or they're not aware of something. Because all those decisions that were made were made as a team. Not one person made any of those decisions. And those decisions were made with lots of thought and care and not to hurt anyone. But that's what, that's what it seems to have done, and that wasn't, I don't think, the intention. I think the intention is that if 98% of your teachers are highly effective, then you should be in A school. That's, that's really the, you know, those things should match. There should be some alignment there, and I think that's fair. And again, we're not looking at just performance. We're looking at growth. Did they grow? Did they get a year's worth of growth? And that is our job, and it is students first. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Ms. Ball?
I don't have anything, but I do need a short executive session.
We do still need to have an executive session, so.
Would this be a good time for you to address the thing that I was asking you to explain to the public? I've had people come to me and ask me, I can't address the board about things. You see the shakings of the heads, and this has been going on for quite some time. And, you know, I talked to you about it, Alicia, a little bit. So I don't know if Angela wants to address that or me address.
Well, I can, certainly. There's a policy that has just been included in your policy revisions, 149.30, I believe, that addresses this, and this is not a new issue. It just indicates that communication regarding operations or day-to-day functions of the district, it is preferred that those come through the superintendent. There's no prohibition about coming to the board. There's no restraint on First Amendment's free speech. I don't know how that got legs, but that is certainly not the case in this policy. There is, you know, a hierarchy in every organization. If you were working at Amazon, you would not get an audience with Jeff Bezos. I mean, that's just the reality of it. So there is a protocol. If there are operational things that need to be addressed, obviously, teachers would go to their site administrator first and then on up the chain. There are things that certainly can be brought to the forefront with the board at a forum like this by employees or any member of the public. And that has always been the function of this board, is to listen, much as the presentation tonight about the naming. People can come to the board, vent their spleen, say nice things, whatever they would like to do. The board takes that in, and then action can be taken at a subsequent meeting. So there's nothing in that new policy that prohibits any contact. And if
Is this concern in regards to this, what we have on the agenda in regards to discussion, or is this in regards to the policy?
This is, this, people have a question, me, why can't I come to the board? And I've had that question ever since I've been on the board. And there are times, this is the best way I can explain it, me. Okay, if there is a case coming to a judge, you can't call that judge and discuss that case, because if you do, he has to release himself. He can't, he can't vote or not vote, but he can't rule on it. As a board member, everyday functions and all that do go through the superintendent. We are policy, we are budget, but yet we are open to the public. You hired us to serve you, and that's what we're here for. And we should hear your concerns, but just know, if it's an individual person that's coming to the board and something's gonna be voted on, and you talk to one of us about it, we're gonna have to say, I have knowledge of that beforehand. But as a level three in our policy, these kind of things, that's, that's good. I mean, don't hesitate to contact us. But I just want you to understand, the boards, the policies are made, our job is to create policies so that the schools can run within those policies and keep everybody on the same format, doing the same thing, and protecting the students. And our, and we're in charge of the budget. So if it affects the budget, it affect, we, as the board, we have the authority over the budget. So, you know, I just, I've had that question ever since I've been on the board. I've had several people. And some people just couldn't believe I couldn't listen to their story, because they were, they wanted to tell me about an individual person that was coming. I said, don't, 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 don't tell me that. And they didn't understand. I said, da-da-da, don't tell me that. And they didn't understand that. So I just kind of wanted to clear that up is my main, main reason. Does that help y'all in understanding? No? We're not going to-
Alright, Ms. Darnell?
Yeah, um, I just want to thank, um, um, let's go in the order. Um, I want to thank the public for the comments, um, those individuals that came before the board. Again, that's not easy. And I know for me, I know I've had a lot of people feel like their response, concern in coming to the board is this, this discussion when we invite the public to come and we say they have three minutes and then we have this disclaimer in regards to what could be stated, what can be stated. Initially, I couldn't really understood that because I'm like, we got this public platform. This is for the board to do the business and the public to engage the process. So I do think we may need to do better in making sure that the community feels like they have this opportunity. Because I know like last week, just in regards to the incident, um, it grieved me when I seen so many parents going to Facebook expressing concern in regards to, um, just the whole situation. Um, I'm not saying it grieved me for parents to press, express concern because I want parents to express concern. But it almost made me feel like they find more comfort going to the platform than coming to those that they have elected to represent them. And I don't like that. I don't enjoy that as a board member. It really bothers me when people feel like this venue does not allow them to engage the process. I feel like that's a reflection of me as a board member and I don't like that. And so for me, I know I can't appease just one individual, but I know it's one of my things that I would like to heavily focus on in my next term is, um, increasing parent engagement, increasing building bridges between this district and the community. Um, we see what we see in regards to this past year. We have, for that football team, these are the same students from last year. And I can't say it no different. These are the same players we had last year. So it makes a difference. Vision and leadership matters. And so I feel like it's not just vision and leadership, but high support. We see it with Jimmy. Um, I'm glad you stayed. Um, when Jimmy came in the steam hatch, he probably, I don't know, he probably was ready for the challenge or he probably felt like, what did I got myself into? But he had a vision, he had a plan, he worked with his community, he worked with his staff and his parents and his students. And he didn't leave out any piece of the puzzle for what I see. And I think his data reflects that. And every time he comes to the board, I guess that's why I always get so curious about what are you doing? It's my plan that we would see across the district. And that's another reason why I'm asking for the gains because I think we get so focused in the district grade and the data, but we do great things in this district and I think every aspect of that needs to be seen. And so for me, I know what I charged myself to do, as I said, the last board meeting, every board meeting, I don't like when some group feel like they're being left out. I don't like that because again, it impacts every impact of what we doing here. And so I feel like as a district, as a board, I enjoy having a relationship with my superintendent. But Reggie, as you come and I'm telling you first and foremost, I can't forsake my responsibility in regards to your role. These roles have got to work together. That's one thing I told Alicia, that's one thing I can thank Mr. Dial for. When Mr. Dial re-stepped back in his position, I was able to engage conversation with my superintendent and understand the significant of the superintendent, the board, and how these roles work together. Nobody in this district can do anything if these roles don't work together. We might not always disagree, but when we step foot in here to do the business of the board, it has to be students first. But in order for it to be students first, it has to be staff. Got to feel like they can do their job and they're able to do their job. They're the ones in the trenches. They're the ones doing the work. Again, it's us charged with ensuring that that happens. And so I don't feel like I'm able to do my job if one area is lacking and that's across the board. So when stuff comes to us, I think it's so important as the superintendent stated tonight, you got to take all of that in and see how it's work. So, you know, if we have anything in place and it's really not working for us, I know if I shared it with Alicia and I know I shared it with Danny before, then why do we do it? I don't, I don't, I don't mind calling another district, but if I want to let it in Swanee, I wouldn't let it in Dixie County. I could only put Taylor County as a priority. So just because it works there, I'm not saying it's not going to work here, but I can't just jump on that bandwagon if we're not going to do the research and see how it works for us. And so I just, tonight, I thank you guys for coming forward because I feel like that's the information we needed to have. But I think also we got to go back and evaluate it to know how that we look at that and move forward. Um, congratulations again to, um, all of our sports. Um, and, um, you know, volleyball just came back from a tournament. I didn't hear how they done, um, but I just know that they was at a tournament. Um, and like I said, I know we got more than one sport going on right now. I enjoyed seeing the band all dressed up in their official uniforms Friday night because I, I don't think we had seen them yet in their uniforms this season. So it was good to see them and I, I just pray we get that band back to the numbers that we used to have, like what we see in what our football program. I hope we see that with our band, um, and just all our activities. I want to thank our faith-based community. Um, I know they're doing a lot with feeding our different sports and our different programs right now. So I just want to thank the faith-based community right now, but also just any of our community supporters. Um, I'm seeing right now there's some alumni competition going on with different classes and feeding sports, so I don't know what that's going to do far as alumni. But just anytime, you know, we're coming together as a support in the businesses and it's just, again, putting our students first, I think, you know, that's what we need as a district. And I just pray we do, continue to do the work to, um, get the job done and ensure that our people can get the job done and know that they are loved and supported and not just lip service, but by action. Um, and just making sure we're here to do what needs to be done. Um, and like I say, we might not always agree, I mean, agree, but I think long as we are hearing one another, not just hearing it, but actually listening, actually taking that in. Because it's one thing to hear, but it's another thing to listen. Um, Ms. Clotler, you know, you by no way shy coming before the board and I thank you for that. Um, and I, I want you to do know you are heard, so please don't think you're not heard. Um, but I, I think you also want to know that you're more than heard. And so I just hope we are working, you know, to make sure our teachers are supported as well as all of our, um, staff members.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Agner.
Look, you know what that means? Keep it short. Thank you all for coming there tonight. I appreciate the preach, Angela explaining that for us. And again, just know that success breeds success and I think we're, I got the ball rolling and I keep, uh, you know, it's amazing what I've seen in this district with all that's been thrown at us and all the troubles that we've had to go through, the success that we're seeing. So, um, and Alicia, we appreciate you. And like I said before, Reggie, we're looking forward to working with you. This board has come a long way since I got on the board. We, we, we gel, we understand one another, we work together well. We want to do what's right for the district. We want to do what's right for the students. And again, there is a chain of command and we want you to understand that chain of command. And we want all, we want communications with our superintendent to the board so that we don't hear it on the street, those kind of things what we've had. You know, we, we want those things and we've always been lucky for that to happen. And I'm like Vidra, Facebook, come here, call us, you know, if you want to know something. If I don't know it or if Vidra doesn't know it, the superintendent will know it. If she doesn't know it, she'll find out. So it's not a matter of anybody's trying to undermine anybody, anybody's trying to get something over on anybody. That's not what we're all about. That is not what we're about. We're here for you. We're here for the students and I want you to believe that in your heart. And that's-
I want them to experience that, not just hear it, experience it.
Ms. Mathis?
I think just picking up where Bonnie Sue left off at, we are all on the same team. Every single one of us want what's best for our students, best for our districts, best for our teachers, best for all of our employees. There is no us against them. It does not exist. We not, it never has, not in my mind. And, and, and I, some people might think they know our minds and, and I've, I've read our minds before, but it's, it's, it never seems to work out that it is correct. But, um, a lot of what they already said too. But I just, we are so 100% behind our, our staff and, and our employees and we only want to give them the, the very best that we can. Most important thing to us is that, that they have everything we can possibly give them to be successful because that's what's in the best interest of our students and in their best interest. And the bottom line is what is in the best interest of our students. And that brings me around to the high school cell phone issue. It's, it is not in the best interest of our students for them to be walking around staring at them phone screens. And I mean, you crank up any mental health study you want to and see what it's doing to our kids and it's not good. There's, it's not. So, um, that's why I'm against it, not for any other reason except that, you know, during our time, we can't tell parents what to do with their kids with their phones. And I'm not saying that they should be cut off from their phones while they're at school, but, um, saying that they shouldn't be walking around staring at a screen when they're on our time. Have them in their backpack and look at them when they come in the door, look at them when they walk out of the door. Mom and dad can call us if they, if they need to get in touch with their kids or they can send a text message that they get at the end of the day. But, um, during our time, and they do have laptops, so they're not screen-free. All our students have laptops, but they're interacting with each other. They're, they're developing relationships that we developed when we, and, and that's what the mental health professionals are telling all of us about kids and screen time. And I didn't mean to get off on that, but I just can't help it. I did, I did, Danny, I did. I'm very passionate about it. But I just want to thank Jimmy and Chrissy and James for being here tonight and, and showing us the, you know, the data and, um, I just, when Alicia said and what we've all said is, we're a C district. How can 98% of our staff be, you know, highly effective and we're a C district? So I think that when we look at teacher evaluations, we want them to be fair, but we also want them to accurately reflect what happens in the classroom. So are we doing that with our, with our teacher evaluations? You know, that's the big question that we need answered there. Um, I want to thank the, um, Mr. Sutherland and Mr. Salz for being here and for all the information and, and like Brenda said, it's, we don't recognize people enough that do good deeds and work hard and spend, you know, that having the opportunity to recognize people is, is a blessing and it's something that, you know, I'm very excited, you know, for that to start happening. Um, Bluntstown, we are coming for y'all Friday night. That is the other big deal thing. And so, um, I guess that's about it for me.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Carlton.
Briefly.
Briefly.
Thanks again, Jimmy, for the report tonight. It's always good to hear, uh, what Steam Hatch is doing. That's very good. And thanks for all the public input tonight. And, you know, we, we do listen, so, uh, we do appreciate it and, um, gives us some information to move on. But, you know, it's a, uh, as we talked about our policies now, they're, they're living documents. They're to be reviewed and modified, make changes as we need to. So we'll be working on that. But again, thanks to all the staff and thanks to our community for all the, um, good things that are going on. Middle school, um, maybe over by now, I don't know, but-
I got to walk on the field.
I think both, didn't both teams play tonight, A and B?
Yeah, it's team A and B, but I, I did get to go and participate, so hopefully I can go back.
Okay, and then of course we've got the game Friday night, so we just got a lot of things going on. So appreciate all the input tonight.
Okay, thank you. A lot has been said. Uh, thank you all for coming and sharing and so forth this evening. I'll be a man of few words. Do I have a motion in second that we adjourn? Ms. Darnell is quick. Motion.
Motion. You running us out, motion. Y'all give me a second.
Ms. Carlton seconds that. All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? This meeting is adjourned. About five minutes at the most, we need to be in our executive session. Thank you all.
It used to be all-
Jeannie, did you agree tonight because you knew Steam Hatch was-